This conference will now be recorded.
Like to call the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two work session to order at six thirty P. M. Meeting called to order. Any additions or removal of the agenda items tonight?
Nope.
Okay, if not, would anyone? After me. If anyone would like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Eric Holbert?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Thank you, Stephanie.
For the record, I got Webb, motion, and Allen second. You guys can find out right next time.
New business discussion, fee in lieu resolution.
Okay, what you guys have in your pocket here today is the memo from engineering with the requested breakdown of the itemized fees, and Andrew is here, and Robert is on the line to present. And then we also have the resolution establishing the policy as was drafted previously. And then one more thing, you guys have requested information for tonight's meeting. You know, if corner lots were responsible for all frontages, and the answer is yes, they are.
So who did the breakdown?
So Robert and I developed this breakdown. It was our understanding after the last meeting that this would be of value just because some projects are going to have some of the improvements in place already. And so, you know, this will provide a tool to help itemize the actual fee in lieu of that would be acceptable to the city for each project.
I was seeing the curb and gutter number. I thought maybe that was on the low side, but we keep saying curb and gutter. Are we requiring curb and gutter everywhere, or curb? Because we have both in a city.
So the public works standards for frontage improvements would say curb and gutter.
Okay.
Just a loud curb in the past. I have no.
So that's like an extruded machine putting in curb and gutter, or you can hand do it, but that's a little more labor intensive. And then another question I had is with curb and gutter, a lot of times you have the storm catch basins built into that curb and gutter. Would the people be responsible for that also?
Well, and you'll notice for the storm, we've got a, that's the one with the largest range just because every site's going to have its own complexities with regard to the storm drainage. So.
And my other question was if we build a house and there's nothing both sides, and we do curb and gutter, and they're in a low spot, so you got to put a storm catch basin built into that curb and gutter, and the pipes two feet down or three feet down, where's it going to go? We have to run it on everybody else's property for a mile to daylight out somewhere into a ditch? Or what are you going to do with the water when it's?
Well, there's not.
A foot section or a hundred foot section, and you had to put a catch basin. Are we just going to put a plug in it, let it run down the curb until we hook up more to it? The city doesn't have any infrastructure to speak of.
Well, it's an interesting question because with this structure, and that was one of the things we discussed and debated to a degree, was whether or not to require engineering, even in the case where you're going to allow the fee in lieu of. Ultimately, we decided that, you know, we're trying to strike that balance where we're not being too over the top and being, you know, creating hardship for applicants. So we, most cities probably would require engineering, like the way the city of St. Helens does this program, the fee in lieu of, and I use them as a reference because we deal with that so often. And they actually require the applicant to have the engineering done, and then the fee in lieu of amount is the hundred and ten percent of that engineer's cost estimate that's based on the engineering design that's performed. But in a lot of these cases where the fee in lieu of is exercised, it might be in an area where it's not practical to build sidewalks, or there are just challenges associated with building them, or it's just not logical. And so, you know, they maybe would never even be built in the foreseeable future. And so it doesn't really make sense to get that engineering done. That would be based on developing one little section of property. I kind of compare this way frontage improvements are normally done to, you know, building a quilt where it's a patchwork, and so that engineering is unique to that piece of property. Well, if you're exercising the fee in lieu of, one of the advantages of that program is that you would collect the funds to fill the larger section of improvements and avoid that kind of patchwork approach that doesn't mesh as well together. So that engineering for that individual piece of property wouldn't even necessarily be applicable. So why put someone through that expense and effort? So what we landed on here, we inflated each of the numbers a little bit to account for the fact that the city's probably going to have to perform that engineering themselves when they do end up developing a piece of property, developing the frontage for a particular street. Now to your question about, what was the original question there?
Storm. That's a.
Storm.
Yeah, so with regard to the storm, I was thinking that was one of the points that I got off tangent on there. But with regard to the storm, a lot of times nowadays, it would be like a low, what we call low impact approach to the storm drainage design where you're not even utilizing conventional catch basins. Because you bring up a good point, the big challenge with a conventional catch basin is by the time that outlet pipe is set vertically, that water's coming out three feet or so below grade, which can be really hard to accommodate. So more often nowadays, we're utilizing, and a lot of engineers are utilizing this low impact storm drainage approach where you would just have curb cuts that bring the storm drainage into a planter or a swale directly. And it's a little easier and, you know, ecologically, probably more responsible because you're letting that stormwater infiltrate closer to the site rather than just piping it out of the area and getting rid of it completely. So it tends to be a lower cost approach for dealing with storm drainage, more responsible, more responsible approach, in a lot of people's opinion. And you don't, you avoid that challenge associated with the outlet pipe itself that's, you know, awkwardly low. You would oftentimes have an overflow pipe, depending on how well the soil would infiltrate those types of detail.
Well, we had an issue at a certain development in town where the curb and gutter, there wasn't enough catch basins, and it's washing around, and there was litigation. And so I'm just, like, worst case scenario, people say, no, I'm not going to pay the city. I'm going to do it myself. I'm not going to put a catch basin in. And then pretty soon, everybody does that, and then there's a big pond at a low intersection. There's no, you know, I'm trying to avoid that situation where, then what do you do? Some people did it, some people didn't, and then what it really needs is a line in there or something because it's in a weird spot. That's what scares me about no engineering. Just concerns me anyway about certain areas, not all, but if you could have an intersection that's a low spot on the inside and that needs a catch basin to shoot across to the low side.
Sure. Yeah, and that, you know, first off, any improvements that are proposed for the right of way, we are reviewing for compliance with the current public works standards. And I would say general, generally accepted engineering standards. So that's one of the angles we're looking at, is making sure that we're not creating a future storm drainage problem either for the city or an adjacent property. You know, there could be a liability. So, you know, it's probably would be considered, one disadvantage of the fee in lieu of option is that if you aren't making those improvements within the right of way, you're to some degree ignoring the storm drainage associated with the street potentially. So that's one of the downsides. I guess the argument in favor of the fee in lieu of would be if it is indeed creating a storm drainage problem there, then that area would probably be high on the list to use some of those funds that were collected through the fee in lieu of program to, you know, that would be probably a high priority area for larger scale improvement.
Well, in that circumstance, if there's no stormwater infrastructure, and the project is going to impact neighbors or properties downhill from them, they would have to do some sort of stormwater improvement regardless because they cannot displace their water onto an adjacent owner. So even if they participate in the fee in lieu program, it may be a scenario where they don't qualify for the stormwater because it must be addressed. They would qualify in a circumstance where the stormwater infrastructure exists, but not where it doesn't, because they would have to put in something.
Yeah, that's a good.
Scenario.
Point, Stephanie. One of the real complexities with this is they're separate issues, but they're interconnected. So we have this issue of the frontage improvements that is a requirement associated with development. And then we have the somewhat separate issue of reviewing the applications for the development on the lot itself. And to Stephanie's point, any improvements on the lot, you know, we're going to review to make sure they aren't, that they're properly managed themselves. And whether we're reviewing someone else's design, or whether we're designing improvements ourselves, I would say that is really the guiding principle behind storm drainage design, is making sure that you are leaving the condition better than the preexisting condition with the development. So in other words, you're not adding stormwater drainage that's going to be a problem to either the city's right of way or an adjacent property. Now, then the issue of the frontage improvements that are required, that's why I say it's a separate but somewhat connected issue, because if they are going to improve the frontage as the current requirements would have them do, that gives them an opportunity likely to help manage the runoff from the lot as part of that design of those frontage improvements. So there's a little bit of a chicken or egg game that goes on there between the public infrastructure improvements that are required at the frontage and the project development that is really driving the project that the developer is trying to do. So, but there's a, it's not a, there's not black and white answers to all of this, you know. It's, it's why a lot of cities probably just take that more cold-blooded approach.
It's like whatever we do, it causes issues. And I'm worried about issues for the city with, now this is built out, and we really needed a pipe in there, passing it to the neighbor and not putting the stormwater system underneath. And then now that the water went down the curb to the next house, and then they did it, and then it's down the curb to the next house, and then it's running into a property that's not even developed yet. There's still no pipe, or maybe there's no ditch. That's why it scares me. Right now, we do waiver remonstrance. There's no engineering, nothing. They just don't do anything, you know? And if we give them a fee in lieu and they don't do any engineering.
Even when we did do the waiver remonstrance, they were addressing their stormwater. In the time that I have been here, they have had to address it.
Right, from their lot out, but I'm talking from the street, from the center to the street to whatever way the slope is. It could be the whole road slopes to the new curb they just poured. Then that water's going to go somewhere. It's going to go right or left, or puddle, right?
But this circumstance, there is no curb. They're not putting in that infrastructure. It would be going into a ditch. If they're, if they don't qualify for, say you guys don't do the fee in lieu, then they do have to engineer it and design it and assure that it doesn't impact people downstream. What is it? There's a distance.
Downstream or just an adjacent property. So in no condition on the private side or with frontage improvements would we allow increased runoff on an adjacent property. So if you're, if an applicant is going to develop their property, exercise the fee in lieu of, so, and not do frontage improvements, they would have to address that runoff from their property as a separate issue. So that could be a swale on their property. It could be a combination of a swale on their property with an overflow to a discharge point that we'd get comfortable as making the applicable criteria and not adversely affecting an adjacent property or a downstream area. If you're exactly right, that when you do the frontage improvements, once you pull the trigger on that, you kind of up the ante on the potential side effects or ramifications for adjacent properties. Because, you know, you're, for one, you're creating more impervious areas, so more runoff that has to be managed, and you are potentially creating, you know, concentrating that storm drainage somewhere. Like I mentioned, this low impact design, like the typical design approach we would take, and, you know, we just were in the throes of this two hundred and thirty-nine unit affordable housing project in St. Helens that we did all low impact storm drainage design on that. The site's got a lot of bedrock, and so we were trying to keep everything as shallow as possible. And it's all basically curb cut flow-through storm drainage system with overflow pipes. But then ultimately discharge the stormwater into the adjacent wetlands that were the receding body all along. So you've got this series of planters and swales that slow the water down, that treat the water, remove the pollutants, sediment, and then in theory, let the water end up at the wetland where it always went to at the same rate. So it's, is it an exact science? No, but you're showing that, okay, we are doing our due diligence to make sure the water doesn't get there any quicker. Because if you just let the water flash off in an event and get to that wetland at a greater rate than it previously did in a downstream, we, you know, you see this quite a bit. There might be a property with, that's had a flooding problem for years, but as soon as a development goes in, the other, they're under the microscope, potentially blamed for problems maybe that have existed for years. So we always, you know, you've got to have that documentation that shows based on, you know.
So this was a development of ten or twenty acres, and you had room to put bioswells or wetland-type ponds in, right?
Yeah.
That's why I just don't understand how it's going to work on a long street if there's nothing underground to carry the water.
Well, we're doing it right now in these.
Weed Avenue.
These Weed Avenue improvements, we're actually converting the existing street tree planters into swales. So the stormwater will run off the street, and in that case infiltrate into the soil through the planters.
Between the sidewalk and the curb?
Yeah.
A lot of our city streets are narrow, though I think the curb and sidewalk are going to be touching each other, and they're not wide enough to have a planter strip. So that's what I was kind of curious about.
Yeah.
Yes, so most of those areas, huh? Well, I was going to say, in most of those areas where we do have that old-fashioned, right up to the curb and sidewalk, there is stormwater infrastructure in those areas. So all this flat land has all stormwater infrastructure, like catch basins and such. And anything new we've designed, like the health center had to put in, there's underneath the curb, the swales are what we're doing for Weed Avenue because the discharge pipe's going that way anyway. So I don't, and I think new development, then we have a greater space to require it, right? For like Louisiana and stuff, so.
What do we do there? You know, we've got to curvy the water somewhere.
Yes.
Pass it down to the lots below.
Well, so on Louisiana, there's a, there is not culvering, but there is stormwater ditch infrastructure.
Ditches.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the right of way for this, that the city uses now for all that stormwater.
Yeah, but the ditch goes away if we put curb, gutter, and sidewalk in, and then you just have a little planter. Right now, we've got a great big stormwater catch basin at an angle on one of those corners that I think just shoots it down to the lowland and drains out into the swamp. So, but after a while, and that's why I'm worried about the engineering. If people choose to, I'll just put it in, well, then you engineer that little piece, right?
But they'd have to engineer it as part of the whole. They wouldn't just get engineered this footprint. They'd have to say, where is it going from here?
That's what I'm concerned about. They could tell the city, hey, you got to have something for me to hook into here.
Yeah.
Which will be existing.
It's their burden and responsibility to show that, that they are managing that stormwater to the point where the flow rate is no greater during any of the storm events for any of the downstream system.
I honestly think there's areas in the city where we collect the fees and then do it all at once because the patchwork might not be good for the whole system where it needs, if, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
This isn't, we got a bunch of houses going in here, and we're going to develop, we're going to take all these fees, and then we're going to hire an engineering firm and a construction company to come in and do the whole thing the correct way and in a, all at once to where you can see the big picture, maybe.
But in my opinion, the bigger, the more area you roll into a single project, that to me is probably the biggest advantage of the fee in lieu of is that you are in theory working on a bigger project that will yield more favorable results and be more manageable and easier to design and engineer.
If you could break it up into, we're going to collect a fee in lieu, and we know if we develop, we engineer these three or four blocks, and we can get an idea of what that engineering would cost, you can try to add that engineering fee into the fee in lieu to where the city doesn't get stuck with it ten years down the road to have to pay all the engineering, where everybody contributed to fee in lieu plus a little bit of engineering, they get out of it. But they don't get out of it all the way, right? I'm just kind of throwing it out there to see what people thought about that. Because, you know, one person puts something in, it could be in the way. Who, what engineer? They could hire any engineer they want, right? And then the city engineer has to review it. Is that what you were saying? So what if them two argue?
We trump.
Yeah.
Or the city trumps.
Oh, we have that debate all the time. You know, we're dealing with that right now on an application where you were mentioning that the city's TSP, and there's some old standards that would allow for a roadway that's narrower than the fire department standards for, you know, getting a fire truck through there. And so, you know, where they're deciding, oh, the TSP says that a twenty-foot wide road is adequate, but or narrower than that. And so we're, there's cases where, you know, we, we end up debating these things back and forth with the applicant's engineer all the time. You know, we're looking out for the city's, the community's interest is our job in performing those reviews. But yeah, it's, it's just different on every project. And it's one of the reasons, you know, the side from fee in lieu of discussion of some of the other standards that we want to update as well, just to, and we deal with that discussion, debate when we're reviewing applications. But, you know, Stephanie and Jose have to deal with applicants that come in that, you know, don't think it's fair for one reason or another. And it's, in my opinion, it makes it more difficult when you don't have these standards in place to fall back on. And these are typical challenges that all communities, municipalities are dealing with, especially ones that are growing.
I love the look of a completed development, right, with sidewalks for the kids. I'm big into the safety around our school. I don't know if we need to draw a circle around the school and be more harsh in those areas, but that's another conversation. It might not be legal. But when you start adding a fee in lieu, and if someone's got a hundred foot on a corner both ways, you know, you're going to add sixty thousand dollars to a three hundred thousand dollar house that they might want to build on a lot, and that's going to be a lot for some people to choke on when you're adding twenty percent to the cost of the development. That doesn't go real well for affordable housing goals in the state of Oregon or the city of Verona. And, and I do worry that it just completely stifle growth, you know, to some point for a while. You know.
Yeah, no, it's a tough one because, you know, we deal with that in a lot of municipalities where you're in that mode of infill lots. You know, those infill lots are usually vacant because of the challenges in one regard or another, you know. In most cities, like in St. Helens, I always, when someone comes to us with questions about a lot that is vacant in a developed block, it's usually challenges associated with the bedrock, or there's not a water sewer main available to connect to. So boy, you'll get people, and we've seen it a lot of times where people don't do their due diligence by a piece of property because the sales price looks like a bargain. I always caution people, you know, if it looks too good to be true, it probably is. You know, the reason that lot hasn't been developed is probably because you're going to be having to extend a water main that wasn't put in in the first place because of the bedrock, or, you know, there's no utilities to hook up to. And, you know, it's, it seems, it is harsh, but it's the reality of that's how public infrastructure is built. You know, and I always use the example, because people seem to relate to this. If you, if a developer does that big subdivision, you know, he's paying for all that public infrastructure and dividing it up amongst the lots. So it's really the same model that we're following if an infill lot is built, the infrastructure that's required to support that lot.
Right, and he had one engineering fee.
Yeah.
Had one contractor do most of it, so it's cheaper. Instead of piecemealing and having individuals go get an engineer and submit it, fight the city engineer, back and forth, that part to me seems like a lot of hoops to jump for, for one infill lot, that there's nothing on either side of them for a half a mile. That would piss me off as a person probably that, well, like, why would I go through all that when there's just gravel road in front of my house that's been that way for forty years here?
Yeah.
That's where, if you guys decide to move forward with the fee in lieu, a lot on a street that's already been established could qualify for it, depending on what you guys end up considering.
Right, and if you make the rule for that, though, it has to be the same for even a newer development, right? They can pay the same fee in lieu, and then.
But they're not going to, because like you said, they have one engineer, one contractor. They're going to do it cheaper, dump it on the price of the house and walk away, right?
Right, but like what we've got going on with doing one or two at a time, and pretty soon there's ten or twelve houses up there, and then they sold to somebody else, and sold to somebody else. And then the city decides, we're going to put it in. We're going to get stuck with all that engineering. And then you find out, we get all the time with, oh, my God, sticker shock price, you know, right? We think it's going to be thirty thousand, it's eighty thousand, or this is what up, and.
Yeah, the reality is, and this is just my opinion, is that developers in Verona for a long time have been, you know, getting by without really meeting the typical standards.
Oh, I realize.
Developing in a, in a city.
Oh, we know. That's why we're here.
Yeah, and that's why we're here. The burden associated with that falls on the city's back, you know. Dealing with maintenance issues moving forward. And we get calls that the neighbor's property water now is on, in my yard, right? Yeah, people move in and develop a piece of property in the city rather than out in the country because they want the entities, they want the infrastructure to hook up to. They want the city to make sure the sewers flow in and the drinking waters being provided. You know, they don't want to have to prime in their own pump and deal with the headaches that come with living on a rural property. Well, that comes at a cost, you know. Yeah, how to, how to collect those fees is a great debate, in my opinion, but it's, I think the fee in lieu of is a really good program. You don't want to set the cost too low, though, or, you know, then that big subdivision guy even decides not to put in the sidewalks, you know.
They can do the math real quick.
Yeah. So, and then the city's still stuck with that burden. So.
Well, the burden can get bigger.
Yeah.
See two or three houses here, and two or three at least, then when it infills, and it's a whole development around the school, or it's half full, and then all of a sudden, there's big problems. There's not the infrastructure ready, and you've collected some fees, but it was twenty years ago, and all of a sudden, you need a four million dollars, and we've got three hundred thousand sitting in the account.
Yeah, I know, and you just wonder, like, you know, inflation's been suppressed for so long. Like, I was just took a quick look at the Consumer Price Index for the last year yesterday, and it was like seven percent or something. So it's like, yeah, is this, yes, these numbers we're talking about? You know, if, if inflation's going to blow up, and if the city's got to deal with these engineering costs, you know, I don't. Again, though, we can, this is a resolution.
Could be amended.
So we can, we can ask you for an update every year.
Well, I see these fees will constantly have to be adjusted, right?
Yeah. Well, and the goal is that this is temporary. The goal is, is that you guys actually get through with the planning commission and amend Title Nine to be whatever the policy is, we're going to require people per circumstance in Title Nine, so that staff can go, oh, you're this zone, you're doing this, this is your requirement. And then there's none of this guessing game. It's, this is what you're putting in. And then if you continue in the Title Nine amendments to have no waivers and some sort of fee in lieu policy, you will have specific criteria where they can access this. you will have specific criteria where they can access this policy after this is sunsetted, right? So it could be a, a house burns down, topography, financial hardship, last house and no one's ever going to fill the road or.
And these costs could be adjusted every year with the masterpiece.
Yeah.
Because that's where they would be held.
Yeah. So there's still the kind of breakdown that you guys wanted with scenario based for who could access this once this blanket policy sunsets. You could take this and make it a section in Title Nine.
Last meeting, that's one beauty of adopting this, this temporary fee and lieu of policy is it's not going to be perfect, but it'll, you'll have a better frame of reference, I think, when it comes time to revise Title Nine based on how this goes and, and our experience with it.
And I just want to make sure it's not more than the city can handle as far as, okay, we're going to do this, but there's nothing to, we've got to put storm better. You've got underwater system that's got to go in here and there's nowhere to tie in either direction, so they are going to come to the city and go, where do I tie in? Well, there is no infrastructure. You can't expect one person to have to run it clear to the river or sewer plant or, well, not sewer plant, but
So in that.
A half a mile to a bioswelle.
So in that circumstance, JR, we could very well require that of the person. What we'd be kind of telling them to do is file with you guys for reimbursement district. So then everybody that also hooks to that pays that person back. But we can definitely require of someone, oh, this is the closest storm management, you're going to have to get there, but hey, you should file for a reimbursement district before you do the work. That way, every neighbor that ties into that and uses it also, re- you recoup the outline.
So what if it's an existing area?
Yeah, it's all old houses.
Any, any infrastructure someone puts in that is more than they are necessary to put in for their own home that others can connect to, they can get reimbursed for.
So.
So if they put in, if they're required for a six inch culvert and they put in a ten inch culvert and file with the reimbursement district to counsel, that's recorded in the documents. Then the next person that uses that culvert or hooks into that line pays them a share of it back. That's what the, um, the house, the Mask Sisters, so they have the farmhouse out on the straight stretch. They put in that water line and filed for reimbursement district and everybody that connected to it paid them eleven thousand dollars.
Mean, Al Kizi?
Uh, Al, Highway forty seven.
Oh.
Across from the Little Red, is it?
Frankie Reed, hopefully.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Kizi was similar too. The Gwens bought four connections. So that, that's happened multiple times, that type of reimbursement of infrastructure bigger than what.
So if they didn't have the money though.
No, they put it in and had the money.
Went to file for a building permit on a lot surrounded by an old neighborhood with nothing and they did, then they found out oh, I'm going to have to go three blocks down and put all this info.
Yeah.
And they just walk away?
Yeah.
Because it's cheaper to walk away and sell the lot to somebody.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be issued a permit.
Yeah.
And they would have to do that regardless of the fee and lieu. They would have to just build it otherwise.
Yeah, if we didn't have this alternative, they would just have to build it.
And to your concern about the storm drainage and you know, developers are going to, if they're going to build the infrastructure, they're going to come up with the approach that's most cost effective, which oftentimes would involve even managing that public storm water rather than, let's say, the closest discharge on public property was, was a mile away or something. It's probably going to be more cost effective to even provide a storm treatment facility on the private property and grant an easement to the city for that public use of that storm facility. We just did this on a project next to our property where because there's benefits to both sides, right, where we actually designed a storm drainage facility that's partially on our property, partially on the neighbor's property. It is managing all the storm runoff from this, this frontage improvements on a big corner lot. So this was a scenario where that lot, corner lot was slow to develop because of the fact there was so much frontage on the corner that a previous developer just didn't want to spend the money, but the market got to the point where, okay, it makes sense to move this development forward, even though we've got all these offsite improvements that are required. The plus for the private property owners in having that public storm swale on their property is that now you have a storm system that you can tie into for future development. That, um, sure, it took up some of the private property, but that infrastructure is there for not only the city's benefit, but the adjacent private landowners. So there's all sorts of different ways to meet the applicable storm drainage requirements. A lot of times it involves private property owners giving up some of their property for the storm treatment.
Take a corner lot and make it a big holding pond, huh?
Possibly.
Well, you see that a lot in Hillsborough, right? You go to the end of the cul-de-sac and one whole lot is that treatment. They're not piping it somewhere else. It's, it's fenced and it's the treatment for the whole neighborhood.
Well, they're getting away from piping stuff straight into rivers anymore, right? Because you got. They want it to go into bioswells and have cactails in it and all that stuff.
So like this whole northern part, the old Corey Hill section, when the city got the Kreps property, is that what you guys are, they're counseling for? So the city got donated this wetland property that this family had lived here once and moved and um, so all of our treatment of Corey Hill comes down in ditch systems and ultimately gets treated in that wetland. It's like three acres of city property that's a wetland. So most of our storm in different areas has those different components like either big ditches and then it goes off behind.
Like there's a new swell off End I Street.
Yeah.
That's one of them.
And then like the one that you're by, where it goes down behind your house or goes to the schools and then goes down the river, you know.
I, I mean, I'm okay with the ditches in a lot of places and I'm okay with out curbs in a lot of places because if you took Nahalum Street and went up there right now and poured a curb and gutter on both sides.
Yeah.
That water and a hard rainstorm is going to fly all the way down now like the kids sledding and when it gets to the bottom, you're going to have thousands and thousands of gallons. At that point down there, you're going to have to put in a catch basin.
Right.
And put it somewhere.
Right.
But now it sheets off into the gravel where everybody kind of parks and you've got a slower filter filtration. Steve Hills, you curb and gutter it, man, and it's going to go into someone's driveway or across the street at the bottom. I mean, you're going to, you can create more issues demanding curb and gutter in place. That's just my opinion, especially on hills.
Well, keep in mind, just because you have the curb and gutter, that, that's the beauty of that low impact storm drainage design is even though you have the curb and gutter, you're still dealing with that, uh, storm system through the entirety of the street, if, in my opinion, if it's done right. So you're, you are, I mean, you're just like the ditch is doing now, you're metering the water along the whole length of the street on both sides, even if you put in the curb and gutter rather than just letting it all end up at the bottom of the street. And so it's, it's a more holistic approach to managing the storm water. And done right, you know, these swales end up becoming part of the landscape design. Yeah, you're giving up some property for it, but being, you know, that old school model was you didn't give up any of your property for managing the storm water, you just put it in a pipe underground.
Pipe and shot it down to the.
Someone else's problem downstream. And it got there fast and, you know, maybe it was a problem, maybe it wasn't, but, um, it's, it's like everything. It's, it's, uh, got its advantages and it's got its challenges, but it's one advantage I think Vernonia has going forward with these individual little lots that the city's acquired with properties that, you know, weren't rebuilt. That were flood damaged, you know, those properties are an option probably for dealing with storm drainage in some areas.
Yeah, some of the low lying property.
Yeah. So that's a unique, uh, I think advantage that Vernonia has compared to some other communities where there's going to be a push to develop every single lot. You know, some of those lots are just, they're going to be good for better of more values with things like storm drainage management.
There's not, can be much more building down there because of that.
Right.
So really, they're almost worthless.
Well. Uphill stuff like the Kreps property does, that, right? Because that's all Corey Hill uphill that comes down to that low spot. See, on the tree street side, we have a number of them that if you had to pipe the tree street stuff to dispel it somewhere, you have, granted, it's probably not on fur. But there's other streets that it could be. We have people interested on fur. But yeah.
Just depends on the area.
Yeah.
I think, you know, to the concern of collecting enough money, and we know there's economy of scale, so if we do the fee and lieu, we collect a pot, we identify an area that's that really, you know, needs the improvements, whether, you know, whatever they are, whatever fits our master plan. Uh, be it storm drainage or sidewalk connectivity or but there's going to be a lot of places in the town, we're going to collect this money, that's not going to probably need an improvement. Well, I know that's going to be a bitter pill for some people to swallow, but that's also going to, let's see if it's sixty K.
Well, that's their choice. They want it, they can just put it in.
What's that?
That's their choice if they take the fee and lieu, if they want it.
No, what I'm saying is.
They get it, they can just put it in.
People will pay it. But it's an area that doesn't really have a storm drainage issue. It doesn't need the sidewalk. It doesn't, and so you'll take those funds into the place in town that you do need those things. So your fund will be carrying some excess funding here. I mean, I, I, I know everybody thinks, okay, I'm paying the fee and lieu, then I'm expecting it there. Well, that's not the case because if, if that's going to be the case, then we're just going to require.
Right.
You know, I mean, you, you, you're paying this fee because you don't want to change the feel or the look in front of your property. Your whole neighborhood is no infrastructure, but where we do go in and need to put infrastructure in, we're going to, we're going to have more money per unit of need.
Does the city really want to be in the contractor business?
Well, I think our expert told us that that's an inability for cities anymore. That we're in, you're going to be doing construction projects. When, I think that was your, Andrew.
Yeah.
It's, you can't avoid it completely, yeah. It's, uh, probably a whole separate discussion. Yeah, it's, it's hard to avoid.
Well, if you think about it, this fund could go, we are in the construction business. We try to pave streets every year. So fun like this could make it to where those paved streets are actually fully developed projects where it's not just pavement, it's sidewalk, curb and gutter on the side. So really it's helping those construction projects we are already doing be the full monty.
And it could be, you know, we look at those projects, we're going to pave the street, it's got a certain slope. Really makes sense to have the curb and gutter on one side, might not put them on both. Might be a sidewalk only on one side.
So we've had, we've had kind of a building boom. What's, what are we doing? Fifteen, twenty houses a year? That would qualify for this building permit or?
Yeah, I'd want, yeah.
Twenty times thirty K, you're six hundred thousand dollars a year. So.
That's a lot of projects.
So if you did maybe sidewalk down on one side with new asphalt and left room for future, you might need to add a storm or something on the other side later. I don't know, but, you know. So.
So I have a question. The applicant's still responsible for the base road gravel. Three quarter minus.
Someone that is coming onto an existing street? That's the thing.
And then twenty feet wide.
So, so it depends. So I think we're mixing up two different requirements in the code. This is for new houses.
Oh, new houses here.
Existing lots.
Okay.
In areas like Louisiana Avenue where they're building where streets do not exist, they will still have to do the half-street improvement because there is no road. They can't pay the fee and in a way it's not putting it in and then just building their houses. They will have to put in the street. There are two separate requirements in the code.
I thought our progress work standard said no half-street improvement.
So those people up on H, H Street, okay, those new houses, they put in that road themselves, right?
The developer.
Or the developer did.
Yes.
That's required.
Yep.
Okay.
Moving forward, they'll be paved with sidewalk, curb and gutter.
Paid by the own, landowners.
By the one who's developing.
Yeah, at a bare minimum, you've got to meet the fire department safety standards for access and you have to be, you have to be able to get to that development. So that is another requirement is that improvement that's required to get you from the nearest street that is to standard.
And typically it's a hammerhead at the end. You can't just.
Circle or something to turn around, right?
Well, on ours, it's, it's a hammerhead because there is no, yeah, I Street's a hammerhead.
Yeah, so if we required like Louisiana to do paving and each homeowner, there was a patchwork of homes, they could just do a little patch of paving? Or would they have to pave the whole street leading to their home? If they didn't want it here and then one way over here and one over here and then.
Well, are you, are you on a street that exists?
Like there is.
Louisiana existed, but they added a couple spurs off it.
Those streets didn't exist initially. They were just platted lines. The developer put that in.
H and I.
Was required.
Right, but some down Louisiana, there was already a houseway at the end, then they built another one next to it. And then what were they going to do? Just do a little bit of asphalt and a little bit of curb and then say, we're done? And then you can't asphalt little chunks, it doesn't hold up.
So if it's, if it's a, if you guys decide to go for with the fee and lieu policy for new development on residential lots where a road exists, they would qualify for whatever is not existing, or they can decide to put it in themselves. So say the road is paved, well then they aren't subject to this fee. That's the piecemeal approach that you guys requested.
Right.
Okay, there's no curb and gutter. All right, so they qualify for this. There's no sidewalk. Okay, well, they can exist, they can qualify for this. They have a wicked awesome storm system. All right, well, they don't have to do that. So it will entirely depend on what is existing and what is not. In this instance of Louisiana Avenue, just assume none of this exists and they can either participate in this or they can pay an engineer and design the whole road and put it into the city's standards.
What I'm saying is we might not want them.
Pave the half-street frontage improvement currently without a fee and lieu. They would pave their fifty feet halfway across Louisiana, that's it.
What if the city doesn't want them to pave it? Because we've got a grant coming or something from, uh, and we're going to, we got the money to pave that already. We don't want them doing little patchwork without all the big plan of elevation. Can we say, we're going to pay the fee and lieu because we're going to pave it?
So we have, we've actually discussed this exact.
Or skip that part, I mean, because we're going to pave it anyway, right?
Yeah.
They pay us the fee for the asphalt.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. So we've actually discussed this exact scenario with Louisiana Avenue. Since we are, we have the funding for the project, we are going to be moving forward with it. There is somebody who's interested in building a house that's facing Louisiana Avenue. In that instance, they would be subject to the fee or the requirement. Since we do not want them to do that, we would enter into a special agreement. If you guys decided that circumstance didn't qualify for a fee and they would be able to, like a not that specific lot, but you know what I mean? Then we would come into a special agreement where they would pay that so that they're participating just like everybody else does. They're not putting it in where we're going to rip it out. So for that exact scenario on Louisiana Avenue where we are doing the project, we have the funding, is going to happen. And we don't want them to put it in because we're going to rip it out. Or it ends up, they wait until Louisiana Avenue is completely done, there's a beautiful sidewalk curb and gutter in front of their house and sweet, they don't have to do anything. But that's up to them if they're going to build now or they're going to wait.
Till two years, right?
Okay, so we can't say we don't want that.
It would be a separate.
And we're saying it turns into the fee because we're going to do it.
Yeah.
So that'll be another amendment into Title Nine or or something in there that we can.
Yeah.
Go back to.
Yeah.
Where an existing project is funded and planned, the city may enter into a special agreement.
You could also run into a Mr. Allen that says, no, I can do this concrete work myself way cheaper and I'm not going to wait for two years. I'm just going to do it. And if you want to rip it out and dispose of it, that's up to you. Walk away.
That might happen.
Yeah. That could happen.
It is what it is.
But potentially they're going to spend more than him doing it himself because they're going to have to get an engineer, they're going to have to have some sort of engineered plan that our engineers review ahead of doing that. So there will be costs kind of incurred by them that go that route, maybe unnecessarily.
Yeah, one interesting consideration, like, I'll, I'll admit at first I was a while about the itemized breakdown.
Yeah, one interesting consideration, like, I'll, I'll admit at first I was a while about the itemized breakdown, just because I'm just a kind of keep things simple sort of guy. And just like the idea of it being black and white, okay, if you want the fee and lieu of it's this much per foot, regardless of what is already existing. Um, but that is one beauty. I think having tools that give the staff some reasonable flexibility are good. And that's one advantage, I think, of having some ranges in some of these categories. Sure, you open yourself up to more debate with the applicant, but. With the ranges, you know, you have a little bit of an ability to. Based on other extenuating circumstances, which there's often going to be, you know, that fee and lieu option could be last to where you can help. Take other factors into consideration, you know, like for instance, if. There's another development coming, maybe the fee, but you don't want to, it wouldn't be fair that someone gets away with not paying anything with regards to the frontage requirements. But it maybe makes sense that they not have to pay as much as, because they. Anyway, it's, I think, a, a reason to have the ranges in there if you're going to have the itemized breakdown.
Well, it's legal, legal, think of that.
Well, you guys can adopt any policy, there isn't a problem. And the engineers are going to review for what exists and can be. Checked off as existing in a good condition. So it's not, it's not going to be as discretionary as. Yeah.
I am, I am sitting here looking. Two citizens. My topography is a little more challenging, and so I'm, I'm paying everything on the high range and this guy over here. I mean, I guess we just, that's just tough luck, I guess. We're cha-charging a fee and lieu to everybody. But it's not the same, but that's my only.
But there's, the situation isn't the same.
Right, if you were going to put it in yourself, it wouldn't be the same.
It wouldn't.
So that's your due diligence when you buy your property and think about what your future plans are, and chose that property.
Yeah, so it's not.
Could have chose the flat one.
Effect the development.
Yeah, so the guy with this catch basin thirty-five feet from his property.
Right.
Is one storm cost. The guy that's got to run it, you know, a hundred and twenty-five feet, okay, that's the high end of the storm cost.
Or grading on a steep slope versus grading on the flat land.
Yeah, but those, and they can always choose to do it themselves if that number isn't.
Pick your lot wisely.
Well, I'm not, we're not going to know about this for a while.
Yeah. Yeah, but if they're doing their due diligence, we have a number of people that'll call. What's going on with this lot? Why is it still for sale? Is it in the flood plain? Is it this? They'll just ask us like a barrage.
I talked to someone about it today.
Yeah.
And this is one of the items that they brought up.
Yeah.
There was a lot next to me for sale for over two years. Ben said he talked to over a hundred people. No one bought it.
Yeah.
It went pending like countless times.
Yeah, they call them lots for a reason, they're possibly a lot to be.
There's a development up in, uh, Scappus, up Callahan Road, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but. It was platted with like city-sized lots. It's in rural, you know, outside of the city, it's scappus, well, outside the city. And it was platted in city lots. And the way I understand it, like some developers sold off these lots to. People that they didn't realize you'd need to have a septic system, for instance, maybe people were. You come out of town or whatever, we're buying city-sized lots, oh, this is beautiful, that weren't developable, even because. You know, you need an acre minimum or whatever to get a septic system on it. It's actually turned into a really nice development now, because another developer ended up buying it, what he did was consolidate all the lots into, you know. One to three acre parcels. And so it's, uh, turned out to be a pretty nice development now, but. Bunch of people just were out that money because they, you know, it looks like a great deal, these lots in this beautiful wooded area are only twenty thousand dollars. Snatching them up. And, you know, if you were savvy and knew how many you had to buy to have a piece that would actually be developable. Might not have been a bad deal. So there are some, there were some houses scattered in there from, this is by like in the seventies when it was very.
What's the famous, uh, neighborhood that's like the mansions and no one ever moved in, like Indian Mills or? There's a famous neighborhood, I want to say it's in Northern California, and it's these huge mansions that are just. Disintegrating because they put, they spent money, they started building the houses, and then there was no way to get the infrastructure. And they're just dilapidated. Now it's a tourist attraction where people to go see these mansions that are just, no one ever lived in. It's kind of crazy.
So my question on Louisiana, we get all the infrastructure put in, and people start building. On the lots that are long there, are we going to charge them extra for all that street? That we have paid.
For the, the street of paved Louisiana?
So we get the sidewalk and streets all in on Louisiana.
Yeah.
Then they start building houses and hooking to the street.
Yeah.
Are they going to pay this fee and lieu price? Or are they just going to be able to?
It will depend on where Title Nine is at the time they build. If we're still, this is a temporary blanket policy, they'll pay it, right?
Not if it exists.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I think, okay.
Get it developed.
Right.
And they start putting houses and start putting driveways to it.
Yeah.
We talked about this one.
It'd be no different than buying the two lots on A Street and putting in a manufactured house. If it exists and it's in good repair, you don't have to put it in.
It meets the current standards.
Right, so we're running. That street for everybody to build on.
This is the one way to get away from that, is the city apply for its own reimbursement district. Prior to putting in the improvements, and everyone that touches it pays a share of it. It probably won't be the thirty thousand dollars. But it will be a share as determined by how many that do it.
Yeah, because.
And we're allowed to do our own.
Open to development.
Yeah, and we're allowed to, you guys are allowed to go on your own behalf as a reimbursement.
I, I would, I would approve that, because.
So we wouldn't ask for.
We need to move forward after.
We've done one that.
Getting all that.
Got where it was, but I know we've.
We have the money before we spend money going forward.
Oh, yeah, before we even, yeah, even one cent of the money comes out, you do the reimbursement district, so we can get on that with Ruben. Apply for that Louisiana, you know, street frontage improvements by the city of Renonia.
Then would you also want to do that anywhere that we use SBA grant funding to put in asphalt? Like to what end? Because.
Well, but this is really different because the streets, the asphalting currently is everybody in random. Collection. This is, yeah, so this is really, we're putting in something that currently doesn't even have to be there. Right? I mean. It's not like you're resurfacing something that you had pavement on.
We're whole, putting whole structure into my point of view.
Yeah.
To me, that sounds like.
We're building the whole street.
So on a project where we're getting outside dedicated funding specifically for that project, are we even allowed to do a reimbursement district? Because then we take that money and we use it somewhere else, but the person who gave us the funding is like.
Yes, so the reimbursement, typically, you have really stringent wording in there. So it would say that that money has to go into. A fund associated with future capacity of city projects or what, something. It couldn't go to pay me, it couldn't go to turn on the lights. So I think there's legal wording you have to put in there to make sure that it's all. But it shouldn't matter whether this, and the reason I'm going to say this is it doesn't matter where your money comes from.
Okay.
It matters your legality and the use of it. So when we got the seven million dollars for the sewer treatment plant upgrade. And we got two million of that in a grant, we were able to lower the fees. So as long as you're using it like for like and not taking from enterprise funds and stuff, you should be able to do it.
Okay.
Because you don't have to do it, it's not a necessity, you're doing it, but then the public at large's funding, whether that was free funding or. In a rate, it's still the city's funding.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll double check with Ruben and make sure how you guys would think about that.
Who's, who's paying for the engineering on Louisiana?
The city.
We are.
Yeah.
Is that coming out of the Betsy Johnson money, or we?
Um, it's, well, we paid the bill, so it's not out of the Betsy money, because the Betsy money just dropped in the account like last week, so.
Yeah.
We outlaid it in, in the city's funding.
Being thirty, forty, fifty, sixty grand, whatever it comes to, and they roll in there after it's all done for fifty foot of frontage and give us ten grand without any engineering.
No, all the costs, so the reimbursement is anything that is not necessary to the project. This is all additional capacity, additional infrastructure you're putting in. That isn't necessary with what currently is there right now. So I'm not, I don't know that it's not close to this thirty grand. I'm just thinking when you start divvying it up with the amount of lots that upfront, Louisiana might be smaller than what you're asking.
What I'm saying is, are they going to contribute to the engineering?
Yeah, you would take all the costs associated, you would document those in your reimbursement district filing, that this is what it costs us.
Oh, I was.
And it gets dippyed up.
I'm sorry, I'm not on reimbursement district. I'm on what, 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 uh, the other counselor was saying, that we get it done with this Betsy Johnson money. And someone rolls in there toward the end of Louisiana and they got fifty or seventy-five foot frontage.
Reimbursed.
It's done. They had to probably cut in their driveway or something.
Yeah.
But do they just reimburse for the lineal footage? Because do we have that option? Or do we say, no, no, we had engineering involved in that, you've got to pay an engineering fee on top of it?
It's the linear foot incorporates all the costs associated with the improvement from engineering to final payment.
Oh, that hundred and seventy?
No, it would be established in the reimbursement district.
Yeah, in the payment. Separate from the fee and lieu, because you can't, since it exists, you're not, they're not going to be able to pay this because it exists. They would say, oh, I'm out of this one, this one, this one, this one. What I'm saying is, upfront, you say, these are the costs incurred for this benefit to everyone. We're filing a reimbursement district, their share is, boom, some divisor of this.
So that would be our plan right now is when we.
Yeah, that's why we're saying we'll get, before we even spend a penny, you get the reimbursement district through the council. That's why we're going to call, contact Ruben and get that rolling, so that before we actually start pulling out of the Betsy money.
Okay, that answers my question. I thought we were just going to do it and then wait for the next person to come along and then.
You have to file for reimbursement at the beginning or during the actual improvement. You can't do it after the fact when people want to start. Has to be before.
So the existing houses would just have a bill attached to their deed?
No.
They wouldn't have to pay, I don't think.
The existing houses were either, well, one thing is that would depend on, this is the other flip side. Louisiana's kind of an interesting nut, because if we had a waiver Vermont trends filed. We could say, hey, you're going to pay right now.
Right.
The next people could pay as part of the reimbursement district when they build, right? So it would depend, and we're working that up. We're gathering all the waivers and we're getting them all documented and on a layer.
You tell twelve, you tell twelve people if they're, they owe us thirty, you owe us thirty, forty grand or whatever, they're not going to be able to pay it, they're going to have to wait till they sell the house, that's what I'm saying.
But just like the flood elevation requirements, you can, it's a have to for infrastructure. It's a land use decision on their deed. Their mortgage company has to allow them to tack it on the end and pay you.
But that improved, that funding has to be used for the improvements on their street. You can't use it somewhere else in the city.
Yeah, it would be.
Is done on your street.
Right.
Then you agree to participate.
Yeah, and so that, that money would go into either using less of the filler funds. If, if the project, if, if the prices go up and the Betsy money plus their waiver money. Goes less far than, right, does that make sense? Less of the city's other money. If we had to pull in other money, you could forego that because they're paying their share.
But reminder, the Betsy money is for Louisiana Avenue, their waivers are for the streets that they face.
Or it could be Louisiana, that's what.
Improvements are done to H Street.
No, what I'm saying, no, I'm only talking about the people that exist facing Louisiana up at the top. I believe they all have waivers. So that's when you call that in.
Yeah.
Is before the work gets started, you'd say, this is the work that's happening, and here's your share. We're calling in the waivers, yes, be mad at us. But you're going to have a brand new street.
It's a preponderance.
Do they get the option at that point of doing it themselves?
No. The waiver is, they signed away their thing, they agreed not to vote no.
I'm kind of a simple guy. Ask a question, and it's going to be directed at Andrew and Josette and Stephanie. Get back to basics. Does this resolution, temporary resolution, lieu and fee. Kind of make your job. Easier? Does it safeguard when, because you're going to sign off the, the permits. Your name's going on the permit, your name is probably going on the permit. Does it reduce, um. Problems? I mean, does it, does it make, does it make, uh, all the laws and everything enact? So there's no problems like we had on Nickerson, for example. Does it safeguard, does it protect the city? Make it easier. For you to handle applicants and to come in the office or talking with other, other engineers? Does, does this help make it better?
It'll make expectations a lot more clear for applicants. Because right now, they can't go anywhere except for put it in. So this will give them another option.
Me, that's a good thing.
And yeah.
It's a temporary policy until the Title Nine amendments are done. If something like this doesn't happen, then they have no other choice but to put it in until. If and when you guys amend Title Nine.
Yeah.
What's our ultimate goal for Title Nine though? To go to all install and know the. Since this is temporary, if it doesn't work, we're getting rid of this?
No, that, that's the statement I made. If it's, if it's working, right? Um, in the effort that people with topographical issues or really cost prohibitive issues. If they're using this, then what you would probably do is when you're amending Title Nine, you'd say, in these certain circumstances, we will still allow. This policy. So it could be slope, grade, whatever, it could be, it's, their frontage is two hundred feet and there's no way to. You know, whatever the criteria you come up with, half, could be adopted into Title Nine.
Would this force somebody that has a larger parcel? Because there's some parcels that are pretty large when you get looking around. And someone wants to build a house and they want some space around them, and then all of a sudden they've got five hundred feet here. And would it be, and then that forces the issue, it's cheaper now to subdivide down too small to put my house. And leave these lots bare.
So the tricky thing with that is currently in Title Nine, if you're going to partition property, you're doing the full frontage improvements and half-street. So if I'm breaking this big piece into three pieces, I'm putting curb sidewalk gutter, stormwater, and the half asphalt.
So you're not getting around it by.
But to his point, so if you had that big parcel and I only took one third of it. Just did a two-piece partition, I'm only putting a house here. This is vacant.
The partition is what triggers.
So partition makes the whole thing.
Yeah.
The majority of them will already be divided into individual lots.
Yeah, there's only a few parcels that are left that could be divided.
There's some big ones though.
Most of them, it's there, the ones that I can think of that are large parcel, it's like a whole block. If you actually look at the tax map.
They're already in lots. All of this up here is already in twelve lots.
It's already divided.
Side is six lots, each rectangle.
So they're.
It doesn't show.
Exception.
So it gets, so that almost forces somebody to hold that until they can sell it to a developer. Because no one's going to be able, usually most people wouldn't be able to afford to do all that to have one house and have some room around them.
Well, if you consider the value of a two thousand square foot house on a five thousand square foot lot versus a two thousand square foot house on a two acre lot. Oftentimes, the, the fee or the cost of the improvements in front of their parcels are going to be significantly lower than what the value.
Yeah.
Of their parcel being larger it's.
Well, value is one thing, but if you can't get a loan to build a single house and do all the improvements, you're not going to be able to build a single house. Unless you're rich, right?
Maybe you can't afford to build a house. I know that's really cold to say, but.
Yeah.
It's like today, building houses are not cheap. Cost of lumber is outrageous.
Yes.
Or maybe you're building a smaller house instead of a four thousand square foot house.
Yeah.
And I don't mean that in a cold way, I'm just saying.
We can't, we can't account for all the circumstances someone would have. That's the unfortunate part. Have to kind of do the best for the most.
I never knew once you partitioned, you had to do the street.
Oh, yeah.
Frontages.
Because it's just like a subdivision. It's the same kind of land action.
You're partitioning to. You're partitioning to make money by selling or developing those parcels.
Yeah.
Typically, people don't partition just to look at it as three lots.
Yeah, or if their house is already sitting on one lot and they have two others and it's currently a parcel, but there's two other lots, they're not building.
So that rule's already in effect?
Yes, in Title IX.
Okay, so that's not affecting what we do tonight. Causing someone that's been holding property for their kids or something down the road now says it's going to cost them 150 grand or something.
No, no.
But like I said, a lot of those are already divided.
Yeah, so all the Louisiana lots.
These, these little blocks are six lots, six lots.
Even though it's showing as one parcel. When you pull up the tax map, it's 50 by 100, 50 by 100. So if they built on one of those and left the other five as their backyard, they're still just doing one frontage.
The difference was we were handing out waivers of remonstrance like cotton candy here for a while. So that was the difference, right? I mean, if we stop that, then that's the difference.
Yeah. And it's because it currently is in the code. So one of the things that Council Web brought up that maybe should be added to this resolution is with allowing this blanket policy, maybe there's a whereas where you say we are going to require either the full improvements be put in or this is your option, but we are not letting waivers happen anymore because that has not formally been adopted by the council. That it was more of a consensus of the council that we weren't going to go bring any more waivers to you. But no resolution or ordinance contains that wording. So before we step in it with the person who meets the waiver conditions, coming in and fighting us to try and give them one, we should document somewhere. And it, it will be in the adoption of this at an actual council meeting. If you go that way, it can't be tonight, but.
And to be clear, we do not have that person knocking on our door right now.
No, we don't. So it's not to avoid something we currently have. We're just thinking the formality, the formality.
I think if we have the guts to move forward with this for aesthetics and us, and moving forward and safety value, then we have to get rid of the waivers of remonstrance.
Yeah.
It's not going to work if you're giving waivers in fee, lose, do it yourself. You've got three, four things going on there. That's going to be, uh, that's going to be challenging.
Yeah.
So I agree with the waivers of remonstrance need to end if everybody here has the.
If you're all in agreement to adopt this as the moving forward temporarily till we get Title IX, we should include that. Waivers are no longer allowed.
And what did you recommend? Maybe we might ask as another whereas, Josette?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll probably have Ruben and Carrie propose the whereas and when they bring this to you. But we wanted to bring that up to get consensus that that's something you'd want to see.
What about a situation where I just, I'll just break it down to Louisiana because it's new and we've built recent side little streets, right? That weren't there a while ago. But what if the side streets weren't built? Let's just go back in time. If someone's got one on Louisiana and it is a corner lot plotted with Ivy or one of those east streets that show going through, but that's not built out yet.
Okay.
And we say new construction, you've got to build all that out. There's no street there at all. They're going to be responsible for both streets then?
Yeah, so part of the reason we did not require that was we didn't have the engineering elevations to meet up with on Louisiana at the time. So they were allowed a waiver. Um, now we would probably say you either, well, you put it all in. We have the elevations, you're going to put it all in.
So it's like a, just a wood lens behind, we're going to make them rip out the trees and put that little part of the street in.
So if they're facing, you're talking about where Louisiana exists, is existing right now?
Yeah.
If they're facing it and this policy goes into effect, they can pay for it.
Right.
Wouldn't have to, if, if they're not facing Louisiana, they don't have to participate in Louisiana Ave, sorry, if they're facing Louisiana Avenue, they don't have to pay the fee for Louisiana and then put in whatever's not H Street. They would pay for that. It's what you're fronting. If you're, if you want to face H Street and not Louisiana Avenue, then you build it.
But what he's, he's asking about a corner lot.
It's a corner lot.
So if H Street didn't exist, you, we would make you put in your side, your frontage with your driveway apron. And then you'd go down the side of your lot at the edge of the right of way and you'd put in your sidewalk.
Yeah, people are going to avoid corner lots for a while.
Yeah.
Somebody, okay.
I've actually seen that Googling a year or so ago, somewhere back in the Midwest where all the developers were leaving the corner lots because they were the most expensive to develop. Eventually.
Eventually it fills in, yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know how you get around it. Because how could you tell, how could you say, how would you ever get it built if it didn't require?
You won't.
Now, the next lot over, is he going to have to build the street because the corner lot's empty? And then they get off with not building the street part? See what I mean?
Well, yeah, then, yeah, it'd be one house removed. He'd have to build out all the way out.
So they'd have to put on a reimbursement for whoever did the corner to get their money back, right?
Yeah.
No, because the, if you're talking the current code in Louisiana with no side streets built, the first guy put the half street improvement in front of Louisiana, right? His whole distance. The guy from H Street puts it in from Louisiana to his home. The distance, half street improvement, the distance. So he wouldn't have to do sidewalk or any of that. But that's the problem with, it's really scenario based in that if the road doesn't exist, you're, you're required to put it in anyway. You're not as, just a home on a lot. You don't qualify for this. If there is no existing road, if it's just platted lines on the ground, you're doing the frontage improvements in the half street anyway. Because that's in, currently in Title IX code and it's separate from one single family home being built.
So Robert wanted me to say this on his behalf. I apologize because he sent it to me four minutes ago. Uh, he said, can you say, with the ultimate Title IX changes, we can adjust what the requirements are based on ultimate vision of city streets, but with the temporary fee and lieu option simply gives people an alternative to the current requirement of having to put the improvements in.
Yeah. But when you get into Title IX, as long as it's not beneficial or detrimental to one class of applicants, you can make scenario-based criteria. But it has, it can't be like anybody that lives on this type of street can't do this. That kind of classism stuff, but you could do criteria, topography, you know, blah, 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 all these criteria.
Trees, I would hate to see the trees on OA Hill go away for us, for a curb. I mean, even if I don't live there, I'd still hate to see it, that those trees that were planted 60 years ago by people that lined a couple of streets.
Yeah, so it's fully built out up there. So you could say if the house burns down, if the house.
Our definition of fully built out is going to have to be a little fleshed out.
No, I mean fully with homes. I don't mean the infrastructure is fully built.
No, well, Stephanie, we were looking.
What if you add a tiny?
The city has a minimum lot requirement of 5,000 square feet. And there's a lot of little vacant spots that you could, you could put a house here, you could put a house here. I mean, when I was talking to Stephanie, talking up to her on the hill, oh, no, there's, there's room here, there's room here. It's not fully built out, so.
Well, you can only, you can only have 50% lot coverage too. So what size of teeny home could you do?
We could talk about his parcel where he could definitely fit more houses.
Oh, I'm talking about like Arkansas up there, there's not.
Since we were talking up on the hill too, we were looking.
But yours is the perfect same thing.
Well, yeah.
We're not looking at 10,000 square foot lots with the house in the middle of two where you can't possibly divide it. We're looking at ones where you definitely could divide it into more.
Oh, see, I think what Jer is talking about is, let's say Arkansas, right? There's all those trees, the boulevards lined with trees. There's middle houses on littler lots. Yeah, there might be able to be an ADU, but you only can cover 50% of the lot surface with homes. So you're maybe building a teeny ADU. But what I'm saying is in the criteria, if you choose to do the fee and lieu in Title IX, you could say if a home burns down and there are no sidewalks or there's these things that you don't want to force to be gotten rid of, they would, that would be a criteria.
On adjacent properties.
Right.
The easiest way to do it instead of that 50 feet.
Yeah.
Or 100.
So an ADU is going to trigger Title IX and on frontages, right?
Yes, yes.
That's going to add a lot of money for something that's supposed to be affordable. Grandma out or something or have a little, you know, we talked about.
So typically the ADU, that's kind of a pie in the sky idea the state had a number of years ago. It is not the way to do affordable housing. The cluster cottage version where you take two acres and you do little senior citizen four to 600 square foot little dwellings, that's a more affordable, they tried to sell the ADU grandma's cottage as a low income housing thing. That was just a ruse. It's mostly for grandma to live there or for you to live there and rake your house out or whatever combo.
In Portland where they're pulling them in in their backyard and they're still on wheels and have their hitch attached. Tiny home, yeah, that could be an affordable house, but other than that, tiny homes really aren't.
No, because ours aren't allowed to be on wheels. You have to have foundation or post and pier or skirted or whatever. Ours are, are stick-built house, just.
So I wa, I don't see it really happening if they're going to do frontage improvements and.
It will probably only happen on places that have the space and have the improvements in front of them, really. I mean, that's, that work, that could be reasonably, you know, if someone has the street and curb gutter sidewalk storm and the space to put an ADU, they may, but it's not going to be rampant over the whole town.
Yeah.
Especially with the 50% maximum of lot coverage.
And to address the houses burning down, planning discussed this and as long as it's built, it's much like this SDC requirement. As long as it's building like for like and the footprint's not any different or smaller, then they wouldn't assess the frontage requirements.
Yeah. Because it wouldn't really be legit.
It's more, it's like very much like SDCs.
Yeah.
If you're making it, if you're replacing a 700 square foot house with a 3,500 square foot monstrosity.
You're increasing the capacity needed, yeah.
Yeah.
Aside from that, they're not assessing that requirement.
Yeah. So if you guys are for the fee and lieu with the addition of documenting that we're pulling back waivers, then really the next step is to work with Carrie in the Planning Commission and start hashing out the sections or the red lines or the whatever we're going to do with Title IX so that this isn't more than a 24 month policy if it has to even be that long, right?
So we're not, we're not dumping all this on the Planning Commission to do that?
No, so I talked to Carrie about that actually, and she's taken really good notes from all of our work sessions that we've had. And what she intends on bringing forward is a draft Title IX amendment that is putting in the things that you guys have already discussed to be hashed out. And then it'll come to you guys to, so a bit of planning and then it'll come to you guys. But she has a pretty good idea of kind of the different areas you guys are wanting to go.
Yeah.
So it's not just going to be here's Title IX, how do you want to change it?
Yeah, because then I think it doesn't incorporate all the minutes and kind of documentation we have of the movement that's already been made. So we're not starting from scratch.
Are we looking at maybe possibly coming back to us in March?
Um, so Title IX amendments, no, it'll take time. Um, the fee and lieu resolution, assuming you guys are all in agreement.
This one.
I would like to bring forward.
March.
Yeah, that's probably the first meeting in March.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we have to go somewhere. If we don't want to keep doing waivers or remonstrance, we need something that's an option because Title IX right now has zero flexibility. So anything, all the concerns about making this perfect balance of safe for the city, but also as cheap as possible for people to build is things that we really need to take up in Title IX. This is just a temporary, we have to go somewhere. And this is an amendable policy and it sounds like we can even change the fees every year, so.
Yeah.
I think we have to do something. And the longer we don't do it, we only have Title IX and they have to build it.
Well, and this is my other kind of reason for for, kind of forcing you guys to either say yea or nay, is we're about to go into the best part of the year for building. So if we have people that are going to be turning in applications and we don't have this, then we're in that back and forth fight with them and they're slowed down if they have to get engineering or specific thing, it's just.
I have three on my desk and four more that are just waiting to be turned in to know what's going on with this.
We will know by July, August, if this is a total failure or working out. If this construction stops, everybody walks away or if it's just a nightmare with
Yeah.
engineering problems or something. We should know within six months, right?
Yeah.
Before we're done tweaking Title IX.
Oh, yeah.
I'd emphasize though, and I'm sorry, Stephanie, but the, you know, don't confuse people's frustration with the fact that the waiver's not an option now with frustration over having to do this. Because I think that's where most of the frustration is going to come from is just the fact that the waiver's not an option. They're going, they've got to either pay the fee and the level or build out the improvements.
Well, the waiver to me was always kicking the can down the road.
Right.
For somebody else's property.
Right.
And I didn't like it when I found out about it. I didn't like it that it, I didn't know about it for the first year or two I was on council, to be honest with you. And then I really didn't like it when I went on a field trip to some new developments that are close to our school that someday the kids are going to be walking through and, you know, to me, it's the core area around the school I'm concerned about. But, um, I'm talking, I'm thinking 50, 60 years into the future, obviously.
Yeah. So.
It's hard to do sometimes.
So when you say failure, the failure in your perspective would be if, if it stops building? If it stops.
Well, some people are perfectly fine with that, keeping, we're not going to size it in.
No, I know. I'm trying to get from you, how will we measure failure?
I think.
That it's, that what you're saying is, is that it will have slow development?
Or or nobody wants to buy up here because the $417,000 house just went to 447,000.
Yeah.
And now it was like, well, for no, he was already a long drive for me. I think I'm going to pass on that. And by the 465 in Forest Grove, it'd be a lot closer. I, I, you know, I'm just, you know, we raise the price on stuff, sometimes you see just a, a drop.
Sure.
So I think it'll be up to kind of interpretation if it is because of this or it's because of other factors. The market, the lumber prices.
Gas.
I think, I think here shortly, things are going to come to a screaming halt.
Yeah.
I think inflation's over 7% now. I think the Fed's just about ready to jack their rates up. I think the economy is going to come to a screeching halt pretty soon. People aren't going to afford to build anymore.
I mean, I, I stopped at the grocery store and then stopped for gas and, and, and man, I'll tell you, I feel the pain and I, I make it probably more than most people.
I think there'll be some changes in two years.
Yeah.
Right now, it's going to be pretty slow.
Don't you agree?
I've been nervous things are going to come to a screeching halt, but they seem to keep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just really agree with what you're saying. Any, any change in the demand to build here, you know, aside from external factors, isn't going to speak to the failure of this document. It's only going to speak to getting rid of the waiver of remonstrance because this, this imposes absolutely nothing. They don't have to look twice at this, they can just build it. And right now, if we're saying we're not going to bring waivers to council, they have to just build it. So.
Yeah, it was.
That's what I'm saying. This is the option to be less imposing.
So what was happening though is people were coming in here getting waivers for a house here, a house there, and then they immediately sell them. The new person coming along thought, wow, look at this, a brand new house, I'll take it. And they didn't even probably realize or was informed that someday they're going to have to pay the piper on that bill. Or maybe they were here for a couple of years and then they sold.
No, no, I, I understand and I completely am on board with getting rid of the waivers. It's, I'm saying if we see that people are building less now than they were before, it's not because of the fee and lieu. It's because we were seeing extra building because we were giving waivers. Now we're not giving waivers.
It's ripping the bandaid off waivers, what's really going to be the cause of the issue.
The fee and lieu was just be directly passed right onto the house because they're going to pay it. They're going to add it to the price of the house. Someone's going to pay that bill. So the prices are going to go up, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but by not doing the waivers, they're going to go up whether we have the fee and lieu or not because they're going to have to just do all the.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And they already are going to, plywood went from $7 a sheet or OSB or whatever it is, $7 a sheet to $70 a sheet.
I pay over 100 for inch and eighths.
Back to your question about, does this make our lives easier? I think this option makes it easier for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, you are referring the, the word to a degree, but then when it is picked up, I think that net. I think the net process is still easier because of the fact that you're doing larger pieces of it.
Well, and you're potentially deferring it from an area that's gonna be difficult or where it's not currently necessary or maybe never will be necessary.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's where we'll gain an advantage there.
And then use Title IX to express the vision for the zones and requirements and all of that for the future. And then staff just implements Title IX when people come in and we track along.
So when they pay a fee and lieu, we record that on the deed? Is that gonna be on the deed?
Well, we talked about, we talked about how we record the waivers. How do we document? Who are we talking about that with?
We're talking about the staff level. We're not sure yet.
Uh, fee and lieu?
How do we document?
That they've already paid.
That they've paid.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, with a home build, it would be in the, for ten years, it will be in the, the.
Well, then it's gonna need to get our map.
Yeah. So like we have a waiver layer, we could also have a fee and lieu layer where it's recorded. We, we may want to record it.
Yeah, if you're gonna tie a timeframe to it, it might be based on that. Would I feel expire if the standards changed? Because, you know, it takes, these wheels turn slowly, but you know, one of the reasons we're knowing you need a TSP update is for instance, with the major move of the school being located up there on the hill. And that changed how all the streets are, to your point, are used and the
Yeah.
public safety concerns with influence, their classification of streets and, you know, what the street standard looks like. And that's, that's a dynamic process where standards change and, and um, just because someone either built, did frontage improvements along with an application, brought it up to the current standard or paid a free fee and lieu of. Now that shouldn't be like a blank check to let any future owners off the hook because boy, it's, we see these standards change more quickly than you can imagine. We did a project in the city of Vancouver where I've been doing this long enough now where I've seen it come full circle where we were involved in a project years ago where frontage improvements were put in with the curb tight sidewalk. This lot was never developed, but that frontage, those frontage improvements were done as part of a larger development. Well, that lot sat vacant. Now a veterinary clinic comes along, it's gonna develop the lot. In the meantime, the street standard had changed to more modern configuration of that landscape strip between the sidewalk and the curb. And basically the city was, it was a perfect, beautiful sidewalk, curb gutter, everything in functioning properly. And the city took the hard line approach that you've got to tear that out and upgrade it to the current standard with the planner strip. And we ended up going back and forth on it and ultimately it, it was gonna be more complicated even for the city to actually impose that new street standard because it required a, a wider overall footprint for the street that it was gonna snowball into a lot of extra work. But, you know, the point being that if you are gonna, I think, attach uh, something to the deed that essentially, okay, we've checked the box through the fee and lieu of. You know, I think you would wanna put the street standard of that time. Yeah, it, it could be a time. Could be tied to a timeframe or a change in the standard.
Yeah, I'm just saying document the money is expended. So then if the standard, if you keep this piecemeal version and the price goes up or the standard changes, that would all be part of it. But I'm thinking of some way of recording it because how we are making the waiver map is all the deed document numbers, right? So we can reference exactly who got that waiver, what parcel did they get it for, and where is it recorded at the county? So I'm just saying the recording part.
True.
Not that it gets them off the hook from future upgrades, but it documents for the future us, something that's never gonna go away.
Well, this isn't a new thing. We can ask what other cities do also.
Yeah.
And it could be like the SDCs, SDCs aren't recorded on their title, but it's in the SDC ordinance. Any building after this date was subject to the fee and any before.
Right.
Never paid it, then you are subject to it if you rebuild.
Right, bigger than your like for life. Yeah.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be on the deed.
Yeah.
But.
No, it's.
There's a way to track it.
Right. So whatever we end up doing with it, do it help. Yeah.
See, and there was that city down south, that might've been why they were still making waivers or remonstrance. Even with the fee and lieu, because to your point, if there was a future code change or whatever, standard change, they were waving their right that they would, if the city came in and said, well, you gotta do this now. There are already a yes vote.
Yeah.
That's something we need to pass back by Ruben and.
Yeah.
And but there's a Southern or somewhere does that. They do the fee and lieu and then they did the.
I have all that.
Yeah. It was one of them. I've seen that. We were kinda, I was like, why would they do both? And we're not doing a waiver or a remon- it's a waiver and remonstrance by future improvements or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd have to get the specific language.
Wouldn't I have that in my email somewhere?
Gets complicated.
Well, I just don't want the city to be hung out with extra expenses because we didn't charge enough to start with. You know, it seems like the city subsidizing all these contractors.
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe we said it, when that fund hits three hundred thousand, we spend the money. Because if you don't do projects and then.
Yeah, you're losing, wasting them.
Inflation takes over and then you don't really, you get sticker shock because you haven't done anything for a long time.
Yeah.
Maybe we set a number, we've collected two hundred and fifty thousand in this, we're gonna go do some sidewalk or a street improvement or whatever. We're gonna contract it out and do an improvement somewhere. Um, or whatever number we, you know.
Probably like the policy to set from council.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's with staff's input. All of us are just here temporary, so we.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta hand something off to the next.
Do you like the pol- policies you guys have put on the reserve funds?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
You would just say once this money hits this, then it.
This is a big change. And uh, I mean, I have the guts to go forward just for the safety standpoint of our kids. I watch my kids walk up and down the roads their whole life. They didn't get run over, thank goodness, but dodging parked cars and dodging cars and maybe it makes them better. I don't know. With the school location and we do what we've talked about up there, you're gonna see, I don't know how many hundreds of houses could go in up there. That's probably the next. Sixty seven.
And if we annex in the, the boot.
Let's see.
Yeah, if that.
And, you know.
Yeah.
Future.
Yes.
Do you need anything else from us?
I've got a couple of questions that we need to follow up and then got a consensus for staff to bring forward the resolution for adoption as amended at the first meeting in March.
And so also will come the master schedule with those breakdowns?
It's gonna be in.
Oh, can be in a resolution.
It's gonna be in the resolution.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because it, it's not an ordinance, so we don't need it in the master.
Yeah.
And when we bring it back to them, we're going to have verbiage that the planner and legal worked over about addressing that we're formally not doing the waivers.
That's the amended.
Those need to be, those need to be separate resolutions or they can all be tied together. It'd be all.
It's all one subject really. It's frontage improvements.
Cause that's what they were waving their way away from and now we're allowing them not to do that, but to pay.
To do this.
Temporarily.
Yeah.
So we get from you guys what Title IX really looks like and adopted it.
Yeah.
So you're on board?
I'm on board.
He's on board? I'm on board. I know it's a tough decision, but we've kicked the can down the road for the last fifty years and that's what we got.
Actually more than that, they were talking about this.
Cassandra found it. She's been scanning all the historic resolutions and documents for the archives. And she's like, oh, hey, we're talking about sidewalks nineteen sixty two on Rose Avenue.
Or there's still a zone in sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, for a while it could definitely have an impact on our new development, but as things get expensive further out of town, then they come back.
Yeah.
So it could.
Well, it's all about supply and demand and, and there's a huge demand to live out here in Vernonia.
Well, I feel like, you know, even if you decide as a community, you want to be an affordable option and you know, you don't want to be so far behind my opinion that you are absorbing the extra headaches and burden associated with that. And I kind of feel like without a piece of. The point where I, I think it is too much disparity there with other communities, you know, it's.
I bought one, a mill house in nineteen eighty five up on Mississippi, ten thousand five hundred dollars. That same house today is probably three forty nine.
Yeah.
Here's a two bedroom.
Right.
Kind of pure.
Probably seven hundred square feet.
Yeah. Nine hundred at the most.
Yeah.
And everything is relative. So you know, your giant corner lot isn't going to be your most affordable housing slot in Vernonia.
It's a trophy home now.
Right.
Right. Well, it's mill officers home like the Holtz is, is.
Yeah.
It's that big house on the corner that like.
Like on the Jackson corner.
Yeah.
There are the big houses.
Yes. Yeah, they are.
It's not an easy thing for most of us that have been here for a long time because Vernonia has always been different. We don't need Portland. We don't need the government rules and all that, which, you know, I'm a big fan of less government, less cost, but uh, the safety thing is overriding it for me for.
Yeah, it's grown a little bit, but I came here in nineteen seventy three, almost fifty years ago, and there was eighteen hundred people. Now we got twenty two hundred.
Yeah.
I mean, i- i- it's, Vernonia is it, it is what it is. I mean, we're surrounded by mostly timber companies, warehouse or and state land. And I mean, we're pretty much, you know, downtown quarter is gonna be the same. I mean, we're.
Yeah.
It's not gonna change a whole lot.
Funny you say that because I was reading the ninety nine transportation stuff. Somebody hired some fancy people to do. And when it talked about the population growth in twenty years, it was gonna be way up here.
Yeah.
And now that twenty years has passed and not a lot really changed. Cause it's kind of funny when you reread that and go back in history.
Yeah.
Time and then say, did that pan out? Well.
I tell you though, one big developer moves in up there, they could change in a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, me.
It's true.
By Louisiana.
Look what happened. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, or in, or in, or in with plains. That back section of five hundred homes back there. It's crazy.
That's the scary part. That's what scares the citizens.
We're the, we're better than banks. We have a downtown. We're twelve minutes from everything.
Yeah.
Small town. It's true. Growth is good.
Also Portland is getting priced out of Portland. So saying we don't want Portland to come here, like keeping prices down is going to attract Portland just as much as it tells locals to build.
Right.
It's not.
Part of us.
A delineator.
People who are here as pioneers. We all came here at some point.
Right. Right.
Yeah, and this is those, those communities you guys are mentioning, those that have had those big booms. It's a little lower hanging fruit as far as developability goes.
Oh, sure.
Better property. This is why, that's one of the reasons to me, the city doesn't wanna, you know, be too overly accommodating is because that burden would otherwise fall on the city to
Sure.
support the infrastructure and to destroy manage properly to where there are risks and landslides and that. So it's, this isn't an inexpensive place to develop. Most of the areas that are left, you know, there's channel. It's not low hanging fruit.
Right.
Well, I want to thank you. You helped Andrew.
No.
Robert and Carrie, thank you.
They had a.
You all. Do you want to adjourn?
I could adjourn if everyone's ready. I'll adjourn this meeting at eight seventeen PM. Meeting adjourned.